I guess we bow our heads. Well, Lord, we haven't been talking very much lately. But please keep an eye on this council. Give us wisdom. Wisdom is probably the most important thing we need. Thank you for our police department. Thank you for our veterans. Please take care of our seniors. Keep an eye on our kids. And give us some guidance. Is how we can help your children a little bit better. In Jesus Christ's name, amen, amen, thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Please stand, face the flag, and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for being here. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
I'm gonna put you on hold real quick. Yes, sir.
Yes. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Thank you. Anything, do you have anything for the public?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Sorry, they hung up. I'm gonna go ahead and read the public comments first that were emailed to me. And then I'll see if he calls back. So the first public comment is from Karina Arroyo. And it reads, members of the council, thank you for your time and attention this evening. My name is Karina Arroyo, speaking on behalf of my grandmother, Carmen Arroyo. My mother has been a longtime resident of the city of Hawthorne. She purchased her home over fifty years ago on one hundred and thirty-fourth street and Yukon Avenue, catty cornered to Zella Davis and Williams Elementary School. The reason I am sharing my voice today is because the corner of one hundred and thirty-fourth and Yukon has become a racetrack. Cars travel at high speeds, not obeying stop times. It is also infamous for cars doing donuts at high speeds directly in front of the schools. Beyond the skid marks noise and burned rubber smells that fills the air and homes, there is also fear, frustration, and a sense of helplessness left behind. And in speaking to the residents, they have given up on the resolution because they have called the police numerous times and have complained to the city. The response received is that in order to create change, we must become a nuisance. I do not agree with this guidance, especially given the risk associated with not properly addressing this issue. There are kids riding bikes, babies in strollers, families walking in the neighborhood, and two elementary schools filled with children that are at risk for serious fatal injury. When I emailed Mr. Jimenez on July twenty-ninth, he was very helpful. My email was shared with Lieutenant Cloquet from HPD Traffic. Lieutenant Cloquet, who was also very helpful, and contacted me on July thirty-first. In his communication to me, he stated that within a three-hour span, fourteen citations were issued in the area. This speaks volumes in support of the serious community concern and need for change. I respectfully request this council to support change and safety measures for this community. Whether we work with Public Works Division Engineering Department to install speed bumps and/or in addition to cameras that have the ability to capture the license plates to issue citations, we just need this resolved before a life is altered or lost. I thank you for your time and dedication to resolution in advance, Karina Arroyo. So the next email between August third and August eleventh, the city received one hundred and fifteen emails that reads the following. Dear Senator Bradford and the Hawthorne City Council, I join with Hawthorne City Council member Hedera Wad in support of SB fourteen-ten, the COVID-nineteen Emergency Rental Assistance Program that is progressing through the California Legislature. Hawthorne residents and all Californians need this legislation to bring financial rent relief and prevent massive evictions due to economic hardships caused by the coronavirus pandemic shutdown. I commend you, Senator Bradford, for this landmark legislation, and I ask that the entire Hawthorne City Council vote on Councilmember Wad's resolution supporting SB fourteen-ten. Thank you.
Mr. City Clerk, were those all identical?
What I read right now is the message that was received, but they were from one hundred and fifteen different emails.
But was the body of the email identical amongst all of them, with the exception of the person whose names and persons?
Correct. I'm gonna go ahead and call the person again who wanted to do an oral comment. Give me two seconds.
Are they calling, or will you have to call them?
I'm gonna have to call them.
Okay, sure.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Zarro. We have you for the public comment, so you have three minutes.
Wonderful.
Go ahead.
Dear City Council, I've called in today to inform the council that my friends Mike and Don still have not received housing, despite Mike's life-threatening heart condition. They are still on the streets tonight because Hawthorne is failing the unhoused for some of its most vulnerable and impoverished citizens. The services that can help Mike and Don are overwhelmed, and the best the city can offer them is a waiting list. The sad truth is that Mike and Don's situation is not unique. Hawthorne is failing the majority of its unhoused citizens. As I hope the city council is aware, the homeless count numbers for 2020 have come out recently. It reports that Hawthorne provides shelter for only eleven of its two hundred and eight homeless citizens. That is just five percent. So when I say Hawthorne is failing its unhoused, this is not my opinion. This is the objective reality. We have zero safe parking programs for the almost hundred people living out of their cars in our city. We have zero hotels participating in Project Roof Key in this city. And we have zero legal places for people too poor to afford a roof over their head to sleep in our city. As if our negligence wasn't embarrassing enough, the city adds to this injustice by actively harassing and sweeping unhoused people. I have met dozens of unhoused neighbors in our city. All of them have a story about a Hawthorne police officer harassing them. I've heard about police intimidating them with violence, damaging or stealing their property, and I have even heard a report of a man being intentionally hit by a police car while riding his bike. It is behavior like this from our police officers that has organizations like Good Neighbors of Hawthorne, South Bay Community Care, and Street Watch L.A. calling on Hawthorne to defund the police and reallocate their funds to better serve our community. The police are not the only problem, though. The city of Hawthorne has gone out of its way to harass the unhoused population. Just last month, Hawthorne city workers swept an encampment that was not only on Caltrans property, but had the unhoused people living there had permission from Caltrans to be there. They did this sweep in the middle of a pandemic and in opposition to CDC guidelines. Mayor Vargas and members of the city council, I hope you are not satisfied with the state of our city and its treatment of our unhoused brothers and sisters. I truly hope you reflect deeply on your leadership and how Hawthorne has only sheltered five percent of its unhoused residents. I wonder what one of you would do if one of your children brought home a five percent test score from school. I'm calling on the city council to lead Hawthorne in a better direction, one away from criminalization and harassment and towards services and housing. Specifically, I'm calling on each of you tonight to serve publicly and privately losing your positions of leadership, to call and pressure our hotels and motel owners to participate in Project Room Key, a project that could save lives like Mike and Don's and the other one hundred and ninety-five humans who are unhoused in our city. And I'm calling on the city council to instruct the city manager to halt all sweeps of unhoused people until the city of Hawthorne has a comprehensive plan to serve all two hundred and eight of its unhoused people. Thank you very much, and thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarro. You have a good night.
Mr. City Clerk, do you have a record of who this individual is? And is he calling us from within Hawthorne or from outside? Or is he part of an organization so that we can follow up with him when we need to?
Yes, I'll follow up. I'll gather the information and then share with all the council members and the mayor, as well as the city manager.
Just so that we can follow up, because I mean, we're hearing different stories here, so it'd be good to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we appreciate him calling. Anything else?
Those are all the public comments for tonight.
All right, so there's no more? If there's no other people wishing to address the city body, I will declare all communications closed to order. Mr. Clerk, can we have our consent calendar, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Mayor, I have eight items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item seventeen was pulled. Item five, approval of city council minutes for the meeting of August fifth, twenty twenty. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings of resolution and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item eleven, resolution number eighty-two-zero-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming August twenty-six, twenty twenty, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Hawthorne, California. Item twelve, resolution number eighty-two-sixteen, the resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, ratifying the amended administrative order regarding effects of COVID-nineteen and the city's efforts to address consequences of restaurant closures and limitations on reopening and expanding opportunities for outdoor dining in required parking areas issued by the city manager of August third, twenty twenty. Item thirteen, resolution number eight-two-two-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary employment agreement for an interim deputy city clerk position in conformance with California Public Employees Retirement System and state law requirements. Item fourteen, resolution number eight-two-two-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, announcing free HIV provided by AIDS Healthcare Foundation's Mobile Testing Unit Team at the Hawthorne Memorial Center on August thirteenth, twenty twenty, from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. Item fifteen, resolution number eight-two-two-six, a resolution of the city of Hawthorne, California, designating the official representative and alternate representative to the South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority Executive Committee.
I'd like to pull number twelve for discussion, please.
Okay. I make a motion on all other items with the exception of twelve.
Second?
To the chair. Item number fourteen, we have a change that came in just after the agenda was posted.
Sure.
This indicates that HIV testing would occur at Memorial Center on August thirteenth. The provider has advised us that that date's not gonna work for them, and we're working with a new date. So I would recommend that the council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on a date that's mutually agreeable between the city and the provider.
So then we can just go ahead and move ahead with that item with the exception of the date?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and move it with the resolution, and okay. So can you read item fourteen? Because I don't think you read fourteen, so we can include that into the...
I did, but I'll go ahead.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, so then can you, Mr. City Clerk, can you just clarify that we're going to move ahead with resolution fourteen with the amendment on the date?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you guys gonna vote?
Yeah, so you're gonna know, okay, so item fourteen, it's been amended to be able to determine a mutually agreeable date.
Correct.
Okay, all right, good. I make a motion on all items with the exception of, what was it, twelve, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Got Miss Valentine already did.
She seconded it, okay, please vote. Roll call, please.
All right, Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taguera?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
We did incorporate fifteen in there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, item number twelve, councilwoman.
This is a clarification, which it can be decided by the city attorney as to how to make this work the best way. The, I want to eliminate the confusion in number four, which says that outdoor dining permits allowing dining in required parking spaces shall be limited in duration to take into account the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And therefore, permits shall be revoked as to the use of required parking spaces if and when indoor dining is permitted. So we, in the ordinance, we passed the city manager's administrative order on June tenth. We allowed restaurants and other food establishments to conduct outdoor dining until December thirty-first, twenty twenty, under the emergency order. So this is confusing, because this says that if the county should, and number four says if the county in the future should say that indoor dining is permitted, then the outdoor dining permits will be revoked. I think it's confusing, because that forces the restaurants to be constantly changing based on whether or not the health department decides that, you know, if there's a spike, they may revoke the allowance of indoor dining temporarily and then allow it again. And so I think we should just leave this. I think we could actually eliminate number four. And again, I leave it to the city attorney to configure this the way they want to do it. But I think we could eliminate number four, because we already have an ordinance that says that we're extending the outdoor dining until December thirty-first. So I don't think we need to say anything further about that. So my recommendation would be that we change the city manager's administrative order that was, change this to comport with the city manager's administrative order issued on June tenth to allow the outdoor dining permits to be extended until December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And I don't think we need to, again, I don't think we need to say anything further about that.
Is everybody in agreement? Are there any, no comments on that? Okay, so we'd like to make a motion?
I move to amend the ordinance in respect to what I said earlier.
Second? Second. Well, I think I have the second on with this one, so.
All right, go ahead.
All right, yeah. Please vote. Roll call.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taguera?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So. All right, so let's take a look at item number eight.
Now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for our tree trimming contract project number twenty-one-one. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There are four bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bonds except for Mariposa Tree Management. The prices are as follows. Mariposa Tree Management, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. United Pacific Services, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. West Coast Arborist, two hundred and thirty-four thousand and fifty dollars. Great Scott, two hundred and eighty-two thousand and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, was that it, Mr. City Manager? So the contract for the tree trimming services would be in lieu of what our Public Works Department would be doing, correct?
Correct, the city contracts out this aspect of its operation.
And over a year's worth of time from this point forward, or from what point forward would this be?
This indicates it's a three-year contract.
Three-year contract, okay. And have we established, we're just opening them? What is your recommended, can you talk about what your recommended approach on on what the recommendation should be to council?
Yeah, so this is just the opening of the bids, and so I think it's the public recording of the fact that these are the four bidders we received. I'll be working with staff to develop, to review the bids, make sure that they are actually responsive, and we'll bring back the recommendation for contract for the city council to consider at a future meeting.
Okay, so you're gonna be looking at all aspects of what their performance could be for us, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We're just, I make a motion to accept the bids?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taguera?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number eighteen?
Ordinance number twenty-two-zero-five, second reading. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, repealing section seventeen-point-two-zero-point-three-zero, accessory dwelling unit of chapter seventeen-point-two-zero, development standards for all residential zones of title zoning and adding a new chapter seventeen-point-two-one, accessory dwelling unit to title seventeen zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code for adoption.
I move.
Anybody second?
These have, Russell, explain to the people this is something that we have to do because of the state, please.
Yes, it's required of us. We don't want to, we want to do our job of just furthering the statutes regarding accessory dwelling units.
Second?
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taguera?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
So we have like general matters, non-consent items. Mr. City Manager, I understand you have an oral comment for item number twenty. Is that the case, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as it relates to this item, as the council's aware, the city did receive one million seventy-three thousand and three dollars under the CARES Act to respond to COVID-nineteen. These funds can be used for a variety of eligible expenditures. The reality is that our city has incurred millions of dollars in expenditures to respond to this virus, and the federal fund allocation is not sufficient to cover all of these costs. Under guidance from the Department of Treasury, public safety expenditures are presumed to be substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-nineteen health emergency. And because of this, staff recommends that this allocation of federal funds be used to reimburse the city for payroll expenses incurred by the police department for responding to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And under this scenario, the city would reimburse for a hundred percent of these expenditures up to the one million seventy-three thousand and three dollars. It's important to note that at the July twenty-eighth city council meeting, the council directed staff to develop a proposal to provide economic support to residents who are unable to pay their rent due to the pandemic. And I just wanted to remind the council that additional funds have been received from HUD under a different program that can be used for rental assistance. Staff is working on this proposal and anticipates presenting it to the council on August twenty-fifth. And so that concludes my report, and of course, I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. So, Mr. City Attorney, what's the vote that you're asking us to vote on here? What's the ultimate purpose?
Well, you're doing number twenty right now, and the recommended motion is to appropriate one million seventy-three thousand to fund expenditures authorized under the CARES Act.
So this is a formality, we receive it, and we just have to just stamp it, right? So this is a formality, we receive it and we just have to just stamp it, right?
Yes.
In essence, okay, I make the motion.
Second.
Um, please uh vote, roll call, please.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mister City Manager, I think this might be uh number twenty-one, I think it's a follow-up to um, to the previous one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Um, co- a comment to your city clerk, the only reason I'm questioning which one's yours because of. I don't see the items listed on our agenda, that's why, the number, so just, that's the only reason, but I think we're okay, thank you.
Okay, so this item uh is a recommendation of uh making eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars worth of budget transfers. Uh, within the the current adopted budget. Uh, these transfers uh would help to improve services to the community during the current state of emergency while City Hall remains closed to the public. Enhance quality of life throughout the city's residential neighborhoods, expand outreach to the business community. And improve the administration of the city's workforce. Uh, details of the proposed reallocation uh of currently budgeted resources, um, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, this proposed reallocation of resources uh would do ten things, they're outlined in in the um, in the staff report, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. So you're aware of what we're doing, um, essentially, it's gonna allow us to uh get some contract services in our building and safety departments uh. Plan, check, and review uh process to address backlog there for a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it would be appropriating uh or setting aside two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, for software to manage um our community development workload, including land use planning, permitting, enforcement management, and inspections. Uh, there's a hundred thousand dollars for contract services to develop a structured economic development and business outreach program. Uh, there's fifty thousand dollars uh to help develop a new website that's more useful to the community and has the ability to provide more access to online service offerings. Uh, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for part-time salaries for temporary personnel. In our HR department to address projects related to workforce administration. Uh, there's twenty thousand for contract services to provide COVID nineteen testing and support services. To employees potentially exposed to the coronavirus. Another fifty thousand for contract services to provide access to intervention and emergency resources to people experiencing homelessness. There's forty-five thousand dollars for materials and supplies to improve disinfection, sanitation. And physical distancing distancing measures at park facilities. Uh, four thousand dollars for mobile technology devices to improve efficiency of building inspections in the field. And also fifty thousand dollars for contract services for our Public Works Department. To implement a pilot program to remove bulky household items from residential streets, sidewalks, and alleys. Uh, as it relates to uh the motion in front of the council today, uh, there's no fiscal impact, these funds are currently available in the adopted. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, uh additionally, up to sixty-five thousand dollars of these expenditures uh may be eligible for reimbursement under. Federal programs related to COVID nineteen.
Okay, so, I just wanna make sure that all my council colleagues, so that there's no questions later in the future and. No false uh misrepresentation of what happens here today, did everybody get a chance to review this and everybody understands what's within it?
Yeah, uh, to the chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, Eric, uh, as far as the um, um. The fifty thousand for solid waste, that we're. We're going to, that's a pilot program that's uh, we're gonna try to mirror the. Uh, graffiti removal, right, with with a um. With a uh, a number that people can call and and um. How long are we gonna be uh, the? Trying to develop that program?
The the way we we've sketched it out in the staff report, it it's six to nine months. Um, we will have a number that members of the public can call um for um, for these types of items. Uh, we do have a a a agreement with Republic to actually do this um, this waste hauling. And so we really want the public to continue calling repu- uh, the public to call Republic um, for these items. Uh, the real intent of this pilot program is to get some resources internally to help. Pick up these items that are not getting uh reported to Republic correctly. And so we will have a a a line that that members of the public can call us. Um, and and we will, we'll definitely use that, but we really wanna um orient this program to. Um, addressing the issues that are currently not being addressed with the ex- the program as it exists and stands. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, you know, the uh, uh, it just seems like, you you know. Maybe we could give this program a name or something like Community Cleaning Program or something. Uh, cause it just seems like fifty thousand dollars is going to Public Works. And uh, and and now I guess it is going to Public Works, but uh, this is a great idea. That uh, that would be wonderful if it functioned and it worked very similar to the um. Graffiti removal, which, you know, uh. So I don't know, you know, come up with a name for that program that makes it nice and people might uh. Want to uh call that program to get rid of that couch that they don't know what to do with, you know?
Okay, to the chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, uh, follow up on that line, Eric. Uh, probably maybe call it the uh, the bulky item hotline. Right, because since we tried to get rid of those uh bulky items like uh the couches, mattress, refrigerators, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the other question that I have, and maybe you you could expedite this service, right, is the online service, the capability of people. Can go online and fill up a a permit application, right? Uh, because it was uh, this gentleman uh came to me that uh he's, he was frustrated because City Hall was closed. It took him about four weeks to get a permit to do a a roof uh repair. So, so he was not too happy because he said, uh, your uh website, that we cannot get access to. To file an application and to follow up, so if you can expedite that service, so we can do that ASAP, I would, I would. Very appreciate it very much.
So, um. What you're asking and why you're asking, and and that's certainly why we've um, we've developed this recommendation. Yeah, un- unfortunately, out of everything that w- we're recommending with this. Um, that is certainly gonna be the the largest program that we're undertaking, um, and likely to take longest because we're gonna have to. Um, uh, develop an RFP, um, get vendors in and really decide um, how we're gonna do this, and then there's. Ultimately, the 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 implementation period. Um, so, uh, I just, I wanted to to really set the expectation that we're gonna work on it as quick as we can. Uh, but it will take us some time to get there, and and certainly I can keep the council updated as we're moving along.
So can 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 we say about maybe a ninety days turnaround period?
Oh, pushing. So, so I I would say the ninety ninety days at the outset is probably unrealistic, but as we start working on this project, um, we can certainly develop a timeline. So the council's fully informed of what we're doing and how long it's gonna take.
Alright, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, I want to uh follow up on the um. Uh, number four, uh, contract services to develop the new city website and provide more access to online service offerings. Um, yes, I I I echo the um, uh, the comments of of um, uh Mayor Protem. And um, congratulate you also, uh, Mister City Manager for. Uh, moving on uh our website, you, we've talked about this before, about the need to upgrade the website and make it more user-friendly and. Uh, make it more useful to the community, so yes, we're, I'm 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 delighted that you're moving fast on that, and I look forward to seeing what uh, what what results. Um, I I want to talk about number seven, in light of the. Comments that were raised earlier by the gentleman who um. Who 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 called in about uh people experiencing homelessness. If you're going to provide more access to intervention and emergency resources to people experiencing homelessness. And maybe since, since someone has already identified the fact that the big problem we have is that our homeless. People are not housed, perhaps we can use that money to see, to 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 uh look at. Options for housing, the um, tho- those in our city who are unhoused, maybe we can look at that. As a way of um, focusing how that money is spent.
Okay, we will, we will look at that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, good. Mister uh, Mister City Manager, uh, item number ten? Do you feel that that's going to be uh good enough for right now, and then we'll reevaluate that in six months?
Yes, I'm I'm thinking six to nine months, um, and I think we we we're, do some. Uh, evaluations along the way and keep the council informed on how it's working, um, I think it's, it's a, it's a good start, and as we get. Deeper into the pilot, we'll we'll have an idea how effective it is, and if that's a, the the appropriate amount of resources to put towards that program.
Whether to keep at the same level or expand, right?
Correct, and and I think that, yeah, I I'm pitching this as a pilot program, cause. Um, these are really, in my mind, it it's it's a one-time infusion of funds, and then let's see what we can do with it, um, if it's something that's working real well. Um, at the end of the pilot, I I think we'll have a conversation about if we wanna continue the service, and if so, how we're gonna fund it.
Thank you so much, alright. Um, so no questions from anybody else, alright, forever hold your peace, I make the motion?
Back it.
Please vote, roll call.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes.
Alright. Mister City Manager, your consent calendar, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, I have items twenty-three through twenty-eight on my consent calendar for your consideration.
Okay. I make a motion?
Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay.
That sounds cool.
Alright, I'm gonna move forward to roll call.
Yeah.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
So I think we're, so we're on item thirty, right? Is that correct? Alright, City Council Discussion Action Items. Alright, so I'll just go ahead and lead on this one, uh, I would like to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution. Supporting SBC, uh SB fourteen-ten. Uh, it's the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Differing all or portion of rent payments to those impacted by COVID nineteen. As long as legislation contains parallel provisions protecting landlords from foreclosure due to inability to collect rent. So, um, I'm in full support of helping the res- the renters that we have here in the community. I think that uh, the situation with COVID nineteen and the s- some of the things that are happening with our state. Are uh, leading people to lose their homes. Um, leading people to lose uh their uh ability to live in certain parts of. Of LA County in California, and then people have to move around a lot, I mean, you see that people are putting. Uh, moving, and sometimes you can see some of the furniture upside, it's because people are moving, people are just have to leave at a moment's notice because. They just can't afford to pay anymore, so this will provide additional relief. Um, this was uh, something that was introduced by Senator Lena Gonzalez uh from Long Beach. Um, it's been supported by other Assembly Members and State Senators, including Steve Bradford. So, uh, but the thing is, so. I fully and wholeheartedly appro- approve this, and I want to make the motion that we su- send a letter of support for this. Um, but we have to also, I'm also going to want to ask that our state senators, Lena Gonzalez and Mister Steve Bradford. Senator Steve Bradford also look at parallel legislation that protects the landlords, because the thing is. Not all landlords are big. Uh, groups of people, big conglomerates of rich people that live uh, like in Palos Verdes or in the peninsula that can afford to. You know, spend millions of dollars and all this stuff might not impact them. Uh, there are mom and pop apartment uh building owners, say, your neighbors here in Hawthorne, across the street or. Maybe down the street or like relatives that you might have or yourself. And you might own a, just like a two or three unit, uh duplex, uh, a triplex. Uh, a four or five unit apartment building, and from what we, from what I see here. And from what I uh, uh, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give me his assessment on what I asked him to look into. It doesn't seem that there's any protections that will prevent people from losing their homes. Or their properties that they uh, that they own and that they rent out. So Mister Mister City Attorney, can you give me your, your feedback based on the. Investigation that I told you to go over this SB fourteen-ten? Um, can you kinda, does this give protections that are clearly protecting? Are the people who own the actual apartments, the mom and pops necessarily, in particular?
No, right now, um, the State Supreme Court uh Chief Justice stayed all uh. Uh, actions uh on foreclosure uh up until, uh, I think mid-August. And um, the State Supreme Court Justice has asked the legislature to act on this. Uh, because she does not want to uh exert her power to prevent these foreclosure actions from taking place. Although the state legislature has been communicating with the Supreme Courts and the Judicial Council stating that. The earliest they can convene to make a decision on this is mid-September. So I would say between mid-August and mid-September, these uh foreclosure actions against landlords. Can it that uh start taking place again?
So there's some tax benefits that the state would offer the the landlords um of these properties, right?
Um, I I can't remember if it was, if it was a tax credit.
A tax credit, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't believe the tax credit would would give them the money to to pay their mortgage, though, that's something down the road.
So it's, it doesn't specifically say of what's going to happen in the. Uh, in the, in the meanwhile, while they're uh, while they're deferring the payments of the tenants, right? So there's a possibility that people could lose their homes.
Uh, well, lose their rental property, yes.
Lose their rental property.
Yeah, I haven't looked into whether or not there is any parallel uh state legislative uh bills pending. Which would in fact uh stay foreclosure actions or in any way protect landlords, but I I can't do that.
So I would, so the basically, so I wanna just underline and open it up for comment from our city council. I would like to request that our uh, City Council approve a resolu- resolution supporting SB fourteen-ten. To, in order to protect the renters out there. But then I would also like for our city attorney to send an accompanying letter. To Senator Gonzalez, Senator Steve Bradford, and all those who have cosigned this legislation. Asking them to come up with some parallel legislation to protect the the homeowners and apartment building owners as well. Is that something you could do for us if uh it's approved by the city council?
Yes.
Alright, so, any comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, to the chair.
Go ahead.
You know, um, you know, I I think that we have to protect uh, the the tenants from. A massive eviction, you know, that could could be coming. But you also have to take into consideration, like for example, in Hawthorne. Uh, smaller units, uh, between two and four units, which represent mostly probably owner occupied. Uh, there's twenty-one hundred of them. And there's um, about a thousand of the bigger units. So the bigger units, you know, they got five and up and ten and and so forth and so on. And if you end up losing two or three uh uh tenants, it's not gonna, it's not gonna uh hurt you that bad. But the majority of the units in Hawthorne are duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So, if if any of those lose one or two, you're losing fifty percent of your income. So, they're really at risk of uh, of getting hurt with a proposition like that, that. Uh, unless there's some protection for them as well, maybe some uh reimbursement from the state. Not in the form of a tax credit, but in the form of actual cash. Because um, the people are are very much at risk that live in these smaller units, and that's. Primarily the the bulk of the of of those here in Hawthorne are two to four units, so. Uh, I would like to see something along the lines of, yes, we're, of course, we're in in. In agreement to protect the tenants, uh that they're not thrown out, but that uh, they also draft something. That protects the owners of these smaller units, maybe one to four, uh, and 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 address that particular community. So, that would be my suggestion, but yeah, I'm in favor of uh, of the resolution, I'd like to change it a little bit. To include some protection. To include some protection, a li- a li- a little more even-handed.
But like, uh, one, my recommendation, though, is just to go ahead and support the existing SB fourteen-ten. As is, but also ask the, uh, the the author and the co-authors to come up with something else a- in addition to this to. Help the, uh, the landlords, the the owners, the small, uh, the the mom and pop apartment building owners, et cetera. Any comments from the rest of my council?
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, actually, yeah, uh, you know, of course, we're going to support this bill because, uh, this resolution. Uh, because we know, um, eviction would come. If there is no protection, uh, you know, from the state, even from the cities, and also from the federal government. Uh, this morning, I attend a webinar. Uh, that, uh, was about fifteen hundred, uh, legislators involved mayors and mayor pro temps and. And the police, the the sheriff. Uh, they were talking about how to rethinking homeless and eviction in our community. Because across the United States, they estimate about thirty million people would be evicted. In the near future. So they suggested that for us, the city, and also county, and also the state. To think about if we receive federal dollars. Is for us to come up with plans to help the landlord. At least recuperate seventy percent of what they're going to lose. Because the people that have not paid their rent could be from March, April, May, June, July, August. For example, right, five months. If the landlord go to court and evict this person, the landlord's not gonna get no money. Zero dollar. So they said we have to come up with something to help the landlord and also the tenants. So if the state can pay with federal dollar or with some other money, even from private organization. They talk about, you know, the United Way, they're talking about the the big corporations to help with this crisis. That if the state would pay the landlord seventy percent of they're going to lose. To keep the families into the apartment, not to evict them. But at least is 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 a is a win-win situation. That the landlord would get at least seventy percent of the rent that he lost for six months. And keep the families or individual inside in the apartment or the house. Because if they throw them on the street, they're not gonna get no money. Because if they go to court to gi- give three-day notice to evict the the person. The person is gonna, you know, be homeless or move to some other state and don't pay the landlord. The landlord have lost six months. And then there's no way for him to recuperate that money. So they taught us how to rethink the strategy. Because he said, if you do not do nothing, you're gonna have a tremendous crisis in your hand. That imagine thirty million people be evicted out of the this nation and probably Hawthorne, we can say maybe thirty percent. Of the population of Hawthorne might be evicted because some of them have not paid their rent. And then what these people gonna go on the street? So we need to think about that. So it's rethink, it's rethink how we're gonna do eviction in the future. That the state, the county, the cities have to work with the court system. That we have to bring the landlords and the tenants together to create solution. That if they go to eviction mode, they're gonna lose a hundred percent of that six-month rent. But if the states can come up with the money from the federal government and give to the landlords at least seventy percent of what they have lost. Then they would have to sign an agreement to say, I'm not going to evict this family or this individual. So that's the kind of thing that we need to put into this language of the state, the legislators. If they got money from the federal, if they have any other money out there that they're gonna put into rental assistance. Is to come up with a good plan that will benefit both the landlord and the tenant. Thank you.
Um, I have a question, um, to the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, that's more to Alex that was at the meeting. You know, the seventy percent is, sounds good. But that is just on the rent, uh, is, uh, if I'm, uh, if I'm, uh, understanding that correctly. That's just on the rent that they were behind, no?
Exactly.
Or going forward, would it be whatever the rent was before or?
Correct.
Because you 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 don't wanna get in a situation where the landlord is subsidizing the tenant.
Yeah, you now, they basically, what they're trying to do is to prevent eviction and homeless, right? So because right now, some some landlords and property owners are waiting for the court to open. Because some people have not paid their rent since March. Mar- March, April, May, June, July, when now is August. So you have landlords that already lost six months of revenue, right, of of rental. So they are waiting for the course to open so they can go and get three-day notice to move out, pay or move out. So what what the the that's what these people are saying is. We as 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 public official have to work together to prevent that to happen because if it happened. We're gonna have in our hand a tremendous crisis that who's going to be reinforced those those eviction? It's gonna be the sheriff, right? So they have to be going door to door to try to put these peoples out. So they said we need to come together, uh, law enforcement, the state, the cities, the county. To deal with this because we do not, right now, there is no solution. And they said if we do not take. This serious, we're gonna be end up on a big problem of homeless on the street. Uh, and you see the colleague today, we got these two gentlemen that we know we have provide some type of service. They have refused it, the the mental health service and the and the healthcare service. But housing is gonna be an issue because we know some landlords are hurting out there. That they could not pay their mortgage because, you know, people have not paid their rent. So it's it is to give them something to say, if you stop eviction. We're going to give you at least seventy percent of what you have lost since March. But moving forward, we hope the economy would get better, that people will go back to work and begin to pay their rent on a normal base.
So, um, I I have a question. So so, uh, Mister, uh, Mayor Protem, you're not saying. That the city should make this guarantee. You're saying that you're you're asking that the state modify the legislation. To so that the state is going to make this guarantee, but you're not saying the city should make this guarantee.
Not the city, but it is the state because the guy said, for example, he said, look. I I have nightmare when I see cities or county. Uh, just put on on a website for people to go and apply for twenty-four hours, for a thousand dollars to pay the rent. He said, that is not the solution. So what he's trying to say, the state and the counties have. And the city have to come up with a solution, but we have to be working together. We have to be communicating. So the state, for example, if they're gonna get money from, uh, more money from the federal government, we hope, you know, from the HERO Act. That money should, the state should have put that money in to prevent eviction. If the money's, if 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 the Congress of the United States got the act together and if they pass the HERO's Act. The state's gonna get money that they said for us to prevent people to become homeless. And also to prevent the business to go bankrupt, right? It's business, it's it's industry, it is all because the apartment owners is is a business.
Alright, so can I get some po- can I, uh, I'd like to ask for a.
I second.
Okay, vote, okay. So.
We demand them.
Well, okay, so supporting SB what ten forty needs to be put into place. So my recommendation is, uh, that we support SB ten forty as is, wholeheartedly. And that we just ask our, uh, the state senators who authored and co-authored this bill to come up with parallel legislation.
And also Mister Mayor, for the future, if we're gonna get any money from the federal government coming through the state. The priority should be to prevent eviction. With a plan how they're going to pay the landlord the six months in the year of 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 the. Of the rent that tenants have not paid since March, right? And then to come up with a plan with the courts and the sheriff. About eviction for us to prevent more people to become homeless.
I make the motion?
I second.
Please vote, roll call.
Council member Wad?
Yes.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Taeda?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Um, I think we had a parallel, uh, number thirty-two, that's a parallel, uh, discussion item. Go ahead, Mister Wad. Council member Wad.
See, uh, uh, thank Mister Mayor. Um, so I'm I'm glad that, you know, the city council took this, um, initiative forward supporting. Um, SB fourteen-ten. Um, I had a town, virtual town hall, June eleventh with Senator Steve Bradford. Uh, going over, uh, this piece of legislation, um, and from the support of the residents and the the way he's addressing this issue. Um, sending out informational, uh, flyer to the residents, kind of asking for their support. Um, we kind of saw this resounding email, um, push, uh, petition to kind of get this item, you know, approved. So I'm I'm happy that, you know, once we get the residents, uh, involved, we actually do get to see some change. Um, and things moving forward. Um, I I am going to have another, um, town hall with Senator Steve Bradford where he's going to. Go into further detail of where it it stands now and the new additions to the bill. Uh, but no, I'm just glad that, um, it's going forward. I'm glad it's it's, you know, it's it's not being stalled up in the committee, up in Sacramento. And that the council took the initiative of supporting, um. SB for fourteen-ten, sending a letter alongside mine. Um, it's great. Um, that's about it for for that. I mean, basically, the item was there to make sure there was a letter written and it's there.
Thank you, Council member Wad. Item thirty-three, this is your item, sir?
Yes, yeah, so, uh, for item thirty-three, it's it's something I brought up before and then kind of looking back at how everything was structured. You know, there was there was further information kind of that was brought to my attention, um, that I should kind of make apparent. Um, so of course, to kind of read over the item, it's to. For campaign reform to limit contribution contributions made to those seeking elected office in the city of Hawthorne to a maximum of two hundred fifty. In aggregate from an individual or business within a calendar year. Uh, that all campaign filings by candidate-controlled committees be permanently posted to the city's website. Uh, for ten years and that this begins with the year twenty-ten. Um, so I I've spoken to a lot of residents regularly and they and they want special interest money out of Hawthorne politics. Uh, so I've been pr- proposing is, I believe is reasonable and alignment with other cities. Uh, and for over six months, the the campaign filing reports for council members and candidates were were removed from the city's website. Um, so I I know they kept saying that, yes, they can just check the city website and, you know, for all these months. But since, uh, I wanna say March, they have not been online, uh, even though they were before. Um, to to, for me, the this is wrong, it must be corrected immediately. So I'm proposing a policy that for at least ten years worth of statements be permanently kept accessible to the public. Um, I also kind of wanna know how and who authorized taking them down in the first place as they were present prior. Um, I want our city to be transparent to the public and providing these reports should not be this difficult. Uh, so I would like to to come before the council for a vote, um, at our next meeting.
I'm sorry, I need clarification. What is it that you're asking to be put before the council for a vote? Council member?
Um, uh, it's kind of like a two-part, there's one part for the campaign reform part on the campaign contribution limits. The second is having our, um, actual campaign filings, um. Available for at least the past ten years and and future. It was it was, it was quite odd seeing that the the four-sixties and campaign filings were not. Um, online, um, when it was there prior. So it was just kind of a little alarming to see how this all of a sudden disappeared. So what is, uh, Mister City Attorney, who would I, who who would have information on how that, um, transpired?
Uh, you would have to ask the city clerk's office. My understanding was that four-sixties have always been available. Uh, prior to the election and then after the election is over, it's taken down. I I wasn't aware that it was ever put on, uh, year-round. Uh, but it's it's up to the city council to, uh, to implement such a policy.
And I was told the same information by our deputy city clerk. So that's, that's where it's, that's why it stood that way.
Stood as in to be taken down?
As what our city city attorney just stare, just, uh, shared.
Okay, cuz you know, as as we're trying to look at the campaign reform, you know, as this item was brought up, they're saying, oh, it's easy to just go check online for our campaign filings. Saying that kind of statement and not having the campaign filings online doesn't show that transparency. So I just kind of kind of wanna bring that to everyone's attention, that we can't say certain remarks about, well, the residents can just check online for our four-sixties. When they're not available online. Um, so that that's what, that's what kind of transpired lately. Um, I've had residents call and say, well, if you wanna check, how do we check? And I said, well, they they made statements saying that they're online and we can check for, you know, since this, the beginning of the year, actually, the statements were made. Um, not knowing that they're still not online, um, that that's the only issue, uh, we just have to be very careful of when we make a statement. Regarding, um, transparency and campaign filings, we kind of have to stick to it. Or at least be corrected on the dais, um, from either the city attorney or the city clerk's office. So that at least we're not looking like, you know, we're kind of lying to the residents, um, and misstating facts on city hall. Um, that was it right there. It was just, you know, clarifying that issue from the resident's perspective, um. Yeah.
So Russell, question. Did we ever put those four-sixty online?
Uh, my recollection was that they were posted, uh, um, I don't know, two or three months before the election. And then after the election results were certified, my understanding where they were taken down. Uh, these, um, four-sixties are probably one of the more common subjects of public records requests. And so they're, anyone that wants to see the four-sixties, no matter, uh, what year or, um. Uh, no matter how long they are, you know, they are produced.
So basically, basically, they were, they were, uh, request the city clerk for those record and then the city clerk would make up and give it to the people, correct?
Yes, I I believe they've been, they're requested so often, they're probably already, uh, in electronic form.
Yeah, so I'll I'll make the statement now, if anybody in. And again, just to be clear, if anybody needs to see the four-sixties, just contact our office and we can provide those for you. That's never been an issue and as our city attorney just shared, we get those requests a lot and we always follow through with them.
To the chair, um, how how what's a turnaround time if somebody would to wanna request one?
That's happened within ten days, but we usually get, cuz they're so common, we get back to them, you know, within days.
Okay.
Uh, to the chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let, so let me follow now with Eric. Um, this is could be something that after we've purchased a system, right? That the online system, the better technology, that's something that we can look maybe, uh. Coming up twenty-twenty-one, that's something that we can put it online?
You know.
Record, right?
The the system for community development, for planning and building and safety, um, is really wouldn't be for these types of records, um.
Not not that, not planning. I'm talking about overall system that we talk about to improve our whole system of, uh. Online capability and accessibility, right? If somebody goes to the planet, they have such a form they have to fill out. If they go to the city clerk, they have such a forms to download or 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 do. If they go to the county or the permit, they have, you know, so that's the kind of vision that I'm thinking that we're going to do, right? That each department will have their own, uh, improved technology per se.
And and I think that could be accomplished, uh, with the refresh of the website that that, um, we're looking to do. That is, uh, different, but cer- certainly related to the community development project. And so, um, you know, if that's something that the the council, uh, wants us to make sure we're taking, uh, extra care to to make sure that these. Online service offerings are there with the new website, we can certainly do that, uh, and making these types of forms. Um, or and and others, uh, related records accessible, um, certainly would be one of the the goals of doing that.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, to the chair, that's it's a very good point that was brought up saying that, you know, it's a very. Uh, to the chair, that's, that's a very good point that was brought up, saying that, you know, it's a very common item that's been asked from, um, our residents. Um, so if it's so common, why is it so difficult to just leave them online? Uh, I, I remember prior, like, the beginning of this year, they were online, and for a good amount of time, the last year. Um, so just, if it's, and it's very simple, it's like posting an agenda item. It's not like you don't need this transformative kind of, uh, you know, system to place a PDF on, online. So, you know, waiting that long just to have a simple PDF put onto our city website, which is, it's, it's capable of handling now because we have our agendas on there. Um, and, you know, other cities do it too. It's just, you know, I just still find it kind of odd how it's just not just easily accessible. Um, that way, our staff doesn't have to continuously send out these public record requests and fill them out. They're already online. It's kind of like, uh, it's efficiency. Like, it doesn't make sense. And, and plus, it was there prior to March, and then all of a sudden, starting March, um, they were not there electronically. Uh, and, and remember, you have COVID, uh, and, and the problem is if, you know, having residents have access to city hall. It, it's very daunting and hard even to set the appointment. Um, so, I mean, having accessibility, we have our budget on there, and our budget's actually quite inten- uh, intensive. So having that on there, not able to have, you know, a few screenshots or electronic version of the four-sixty, and as our city attorney mentioned, that they already are digitized, um, adding a link.
Uh, to the chair?
Yes, sir.
So Russell, uh, what is, is, what is stopping us, for example, putting those four-sixty that was, uh, due on July thirty-first? What's stopping us to put them online?
Uh, nothing. In fact, um, this is because, uh, the closing of the period for filing, uh, your, your candidacies, uh, for the city council, uh, closes tomorrow. I assume that the city clerk's office is going to start posting these four-sixties, uh, uh, very soon.
Yeah, because, because there was a, uh, there was officially, you know, a deadline of July thirty-first for, for the half of the year reporting, right? And then the next four-sixty is not due until September twenty-four for the, for the new candidates, okay? So if, in fact, we do have those four-sixty from July thirty-first, I don't have no objection. If you guys are able to put them online, go ahead and put them online, because none of us, uh, 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 are trying to hide nothing. So we want transparency. And so then, the next period for the new candidate, this new candidate that, uh, are going to be running for office in twenty-twenty, the next four-sixty is not due until September twenty-four. Okay, so that's the, the deadline. So if, if there is any problem about, so maybe put those four-sixty that was due on the thirty-first of July, if there is a way to put them online, just go ahead and put them online, because I don't ha- I don't see no problem about that.
Okay, I believe that they're scheduled to, uh, be online, uh, very, very shortly anyway.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, folks. Uh, Mr. Awad, uh, Councilmember Awad, I believe you have number thirty-four?
Yeah, um, but to kind of, on, on thirty-three, I, so thank you Montero for, for making that statement. Um, but, you know, July thirty-first shouldn't be just the only, um, ones being placed on there. We do have digitized records of all the previous years. Um, so I know, at least for my office, um, I want mine, uh, posted on the city's website, just to show the transparency on the city side, um, of all the older filings I've made. Um, they were, they're all there before, um, so at least I want mine there, um, just to kind of show that we are putting our best foot forward. Um, and if the other council members want to kind of fall in that, that's great, but if not, at least, you know, we're taking the initial step. Um.
Mr. City Attorney, could you write us a, give us a little confidential on with, uh, how do, how we go about doing that?
Well, uh, uh, to the chair, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, like, uh, the thing is, your four-sixty has practically the history of, of the other four-sixties. Okay, so I don't see, uh, uh, ten years is, is, it's impossible. But what I'm asking for, for us to do, because I know, you know, we, we, uh, city clerk, you know, we don't have, uh, a lot of staff in there, and they're very busy. Uh, so I would say, you know, for now, those four-sixties that was due July thirty-first, uh, to go ahead, and then, uh, and then we will evaluate from the, from, from what we want to do, because, you know, go back for us to do ten years, can, who was on this council for ten years? I will, I've been here only two years, so, so. But like I said, the four-sixties are history of your finance camp, for your finance, uh, campaign. So it shows all the, you know, what was left prior to what is moving forward, right? So it'll give you a history. So, so that's what, you know, ten years, it's kind of like ridiculous in a sense, but, uh, uh, Russell, I'd be satisfied if, 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 uh, the city clerk can do the ones that was due on July thirty-first of twenty-twenty.
To the chair.
So, to make a comment on that.
The, yeah, the city clerk has the floor. The city clerk has the floor, I'll let you go.
Uh, but there's a comment on, on the same.
City clerk has the floor, Mr. Awad. Go ahead, Mr. City Clerk.
I just want to, can I ask, basically, can I email everybody? Say, which of your four-sixties do you want us to share, and at that moment, those are the ones we'll share? Is that okay to do?
That's, that's not even being transparent. I mean, that's like asking us what we want to disclose to the public. That's a very slippery slope. And, and the comment made about the four-sixties showing past history, it, it doesn't. It gives you a snapshot of prior years, but the current year four-sixty actually gives you a detailed account. Um, also, the prior years have all been digitized. This isn't, it's a, it's a, they're all housed in one folder. So it's not like we have to digitize anything else and then anything else new. And as we filed our recent, uh, four-sixties, those are also done electronically. Um, and the reason I'm saying this is because I've, I've, you know, I'm, uh, talking from experience, like, I've seen them all there, um. All of mine are digitized. Everyone here is digitized. We spent funds digitizing our records. Um, we shifted budget items, I mean, budget allocations into that modernization of our clerk document. Um, so it just, if you want, if you want to be transparent and allow the residents to follow the money, it's a simple addition, dictating which ones we should be disclosing, which they are public record. Um, we shouldn't be picking and choosing which ones we provide. Uh, it's just either you do them all or you don't. It's not a pick and choose. So it's like, what, there's one year, particular year that you were being shifty, so I don't want to put in twenty-sixteen, I'll put in twenty-seventeen, eighteen. Eh, it doesn't make sense. Now you're adding more smoke to the fire.
I don't have no calls. If you, if, 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 if the city staff, uh, with, between the Russell and, and the city attorney and, and Eric can come up with a plan, you can put all of them online, go ahead.
Mayor Pretend, do you want to come up with the, uh, you were ready to make a motion, on, uh, go ahead. What is your, what was your motion? You were ready to make a motion?
Well, I go with, with the, what the Dr. Jimenez said. If people wants, because to me, it's like, uh, like I said, the four-sixty tells.
It's not a history.
Tells you a little bit what happened from prior, prior six months, because basically, that's what the way the FPCPP in, in, in Sacramento keep tracking, right? It's, it's one four-sixty was in January and another one in July, and then they keep tracking all your expenses and contribution and how it goes. And then it show you a balance, a, a balance of what you pay, what you receive, et, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, to me, it, it's redundant, but I don't have nothing to, 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 to hide.
Let's go, let's just, look, we're taking two moments.
I would say, if the city clerk have capability of putting them on, online, you have my blessing.
If everyone's okay with that, then that's what we'll do. We have no issue with it.
My blessing. I make a motion with all of them on, online.
I, and I second that, that's fine.
Let's go. I'll put the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Are there any objections? Okay, there's no objections. Let's move on to item number thirty-four.
Is there not a roll call vote, or just?
No, there's no objections. So we don't need to do a roll call.
Okay. Um, so now the last item I have here is to, um, expand the conflict of interest to include, no business or organization may receive any financial or non-monetary benefit from the city if it is majority controlled by any city elected official or employs a city elected official or a city elected official receives any salary or benefit. And in addition, any city elected official is an executive of that business or organization. Um, residents are right, rightly asking how city council members can receive or the organization receive benefits from the city. Now, although council members may have abstained from voting, it still looks shady to the public. As elected officials, we must have a higher standard of conduct. So I'm proposing that we eliminate any question of a conflict of interest by enacting these stronger rules. By this action, we can restore trust in our city government and truly show that step in the right direction of transparency. Um, a- and look, this is, this is something, you know, we're going to be, you know, the residents are now being aware and cognizant of our, our meetings, um, streaming these meetings now on, on Facebook and Instagram and, and YouTube. Um, this way, it, it makes it easier, um, for the residents to kind of see how we conduct business. Um, I've begun doing that, so it kind of, you know, at any one point, residents can always look back, and it's always being dispersed. So there's never a disconnect, uh, when it comes to communication. Um, I've done the same thing with my many town halls, my office hours. I basically live now on the internet. Um, but the residents are being aware of that, and they're very appreciative that there's this always constant connection between city hall and, uh, themselves. Um, so enacting these kind of policies, I mean, it should not be difficult or even a long discussion. Th- this is what we all came into public service to do, is to not only push for what is right for the residents, but to ensure that the funds that are given to us by the taxpayers are not mishandled or played with like how they were done in previous years. Um, it just boosts our reputation, um, you know, solidifies the confidence the residents have on us in our office. Um, so not moving on any kind of, any part of this item, you know, as well as really, you know, zooming the, they were broadcasting and streaming the Zoom meetings. Um, we, we'll kind of show, um, you know, the apparent nature of individuals who don't want to be this transparent. Um, but yeah, that, that's my item. Um, that's how I feel on, on this issue. Um, you know, if no one has anything to hide, why not?
To the chair?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Chair, well, maybe, uh, you know, I congratulate we to put this item on, because maybe we should also include family members on, on, on that, on that language. Uh,
Yeah.
But
That'd be good, too.
Uh, but the thing is, if there is information out there on Zoom meetings and ta- and town hall meetings giving false information, uh, that individual, uh, on this council, uh, is getting money from the city is misleading, because I don't know, uh, if any of us, of us have, uh, any contract with the city that receive money. Uh, so I would say that there is a transparency, because I, I, I don't think none of us get any money from the city through contracts or to salaries or anything like that. So I'm all for it. Because like I said, you know, we don't have nothing to hide. So, but if there is misinformation, like fake news, given to the people online, on social media, that is spreading false rumors that, that is people on this council that receive benefits from the city, it's misleading. So I'm all for it, but I would like to also include family members and immediate relatives.
Yes, that's also a very good addition. Uh, when I meant by streaming, I meant these current council meetings were streaming. Um, the ones we're on live now, that were streaming to the residents. Um, it, it's a way to kind of, a lot of residents don't really know how to jump onto Zoom, um, and gain access to.
Hold on, Councilmember Tayeda, wait your turn, sir. Okay.
Um, don't we have access to these Zoom meetings? Um, so I was talking about when I'm streaming, we're streaming like the ones we're on as of now. Uh, to further disperse and gain access to the residents, um, regarding the conduct and conversations we're having in these meetings. That's all right. But no accusations, uh, just making us look better.
Councilmember Tayeda? Yeah, yeah, I, uh, you know, usually these things have a reason why they're, they're coming up. Um, and I, I, um, for example, I am involved in a nonprofit, I'm also a city council member. Uh, the, uh, my nonprofit, the only benefit they get is they get a, uh, a, um, a fireworks stand. Would that be in, uh, in, um, violation of this proposal? Uh, Mr. Awad, in your eyes?
Uh, if it, if it, if it wasn't in a process where not every nonprofit is given a fair shot, because it can give the illusion of you as an elected gaining that upper hand in this election process.
Right, right, right.
Uh, and, and it's all about perception. I mean, the, the, yes, you can be doing everything ethically, and you can be doing everything by the book, but it's all about perception. And, and now in a day of, of, you know, we're on the social media and everything's digital, and the way marketing has, you know, taken over the media, especially the news, perception tends to overtake reality.
Well, yes, but I, I want to be specific.
Well, guided presentation, right?
I want to be a little bit more specific, because, uh, this would affect, you know, my organization, who's been grandfathered in as a veteran organization, and given special privileges, not because of who I am, it was well before I ever became a city council member, that it was, um, regarded as a third veteran organization in town. And so it has special privileges because of that. Now, would that be something that, uh, would, um, uh, prohibit us from being able to take advantage of that fireworks stand?
You know, that's a very good question for, um, our city attorney kind of address. Um, uh, 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 city attorney, uh, say if we were to enact, um, a resolution or a policy centered around these items. Um, and the topic that Mike Talia brought up, uh, how would this affect, um, his nonprofit?
Um, it's your policy, uh, Mr. Awad.
So depending on, so it can be either way. Um, well, well, I would say that if the residents have an, if it gives the perception of not being ethical, um,
No, no, it's
Then.
You know, the perception is, is basically, this is what it is. You know, there's three veteran organizations in town. They've get certain special privileges because they are all veteran organizations. You know, perception, what, what issues do we have?
So, to ask an opinion, since we're all elected officials, so you're saying that if you were to run a nonprofit, that it should be okay, um, if you were to run one as an elected official, to gain monetary value of any sort from city hall?
No, no, no. Um, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking if there is three organizations that are in the books and, and those three organizations have an equal benefit, is that, um, because one of the members of that organizations on the city council that would prohibit that person from?
It's, it's kind of like, you know how when you're going into office, you, uh, and we have to recluse ourselves if we're, you know, if we're voting on a project that we own, or voting on a project that we work for. It, it would fall under the kind of same idea. Because it's not, it's, if you have your own business, right, and you're running for city office, uh, clearly, we wouldn't be able to say, take our business and create a contract with city hall. We would have to actually either take ourselves off the board or disclose it. Um, and it go, all goes back to the whole ethics, um, procedures and, and the whole perception-wise, and it just makes everything clean. Um,
Uh, to the chair?
Councilmember Awad, you have the floor.
These other organizations don't vote on the matter, uh, and, and that's the other issue. Um, so look, if, if you still want to have, as long as this, as long as you recluse yourself, um, and follow the same process, but it's just being more upfront on how we conduct business. Uh, and it's not only on the whole fireworks side, nonprofit, um, there are other issues that I still see, especially as you jump deeper into the books, um, and how we conduct on the financial side. Um, it does give that perception of, you know, is there funny business going on? And it's just to make sure that we continue being on the straight and narrow.
I have a question for our city attorney. Mr. Stig, no, just, you, you, you're going to wait right now. Mr. City Attorney, if you are aware, you, you've been aware that, uh, that we've had three veterans groups, correct?
Uh, yes.
If you, knowing that councilmember Mike Daya is on the city council, if there was a conflict of interest, wouldn't you have told him so?
Uh, yes.
And you haven't done that because there's no conflict of interest, correct?
Um, well, here, it's not so much that, um, Mr. Awad is saying there's a conflict of interest. He's saying that he wants to institute a new policy, because um, when you think about it, it would also affect the Awad family scholarship, because it would affect anything that is a non-monetary benefit. And using a city council meeting as a platform, you know, for any type of, of, I guess, um, publicity for your nonprofit would in fact be a non-monetary uh benefit. So it would pretty much include uh, uh, a lot of the activities that, uh, a lot of you have done.
So, uh, what, what?
Correct.
What do you, what does the, uh, council members feel about maybe having a complete legal confidential on this matter? And then.
Why do we keep needing legal confidential?
Mister Mayor, let me clarify the situation.
No.
Uh, I've been doing fireworks for twenty-one years.
It's not about fireworks.
Let me clarify the whole situation here. Can I, to see?
By all means.
One person on the floor and I can't have people laughing or interrupting. No, I, 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 I just can't have it, whether it's. Mr. Awad, councilmember what, whether it's Mayor Protem Montero, councilmember Daya, or even councilwoman Valentine or myself, let's just make sure everybody has a complete floor without any interjections or any, um, laugh or whatever, whatever it is, okay, go ahead. Mayor Protem.
Listen, the thing is like, first of all, you have to go back and look that the three veteran organization was voted as a special group by the council that was seated at that time on that dice. So, so that is on the book is legal, what that council did that time to approve those three organizations to be, uh, grandfathered in for the fireworks. The other nonprofit organization is a lottery, right? So everybody goes in lottery, you know, and then they select five nonprofit plus three veteran organization. The problem that I have with this is the fact that the city of Hawthorne does not put a dime into the fireworks business. The fireworks is a business generated by Phantom or the TNT. Who would have a contract with the nonprofit to do the fireworks on their behalf? What the city allows is just the fireworks to be permitted sale in the city. So each nonprofit have to get a business license to do fireworks for that week. Have to go get a Board of Equalization license, have to go get a fire department license. And then the fireworks organization create a contract with another business for the parking lot. So the city benefit from the permits, from the permit of the fireworks. And then the business in Hawthorne benefit because they charge to lease that parking lot for seven days. The city, no money come from the city at all. We bring money to the city, because we bring sales tax to the city. Because when we sell the fireworks, we have to charge ten point two-five sales tax that goes to the Board of Equalization and some of that money come to the city. No precise, like, I can show you my tax return from the, my nonprofit, that none of the fireworks money goes to salary to nobody. The, 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 the vol- is volunteer, everybody volunteer to do the fireworks for seven days. And when we generate, when we generate an income of, of profit of eight thousand dollar or ten thousand dollar, it goes to children's, orphaned children's, seniors, veterans in need.
That's not the point of this, uh, this policy, Malzmatero.
I need you to just respect.
Policy came is because of, of your conversation, of some, with some.
Councilmember Awad, I'm going to ask you to stop doing interrupting.
Because this is what this is, because not, because, put it this way, Mr. Awad, do you know anybody in this council that is receiving a salary from the city or contract? Do we have any, any of these nonprofit, Mike or myself, or Ms. Valentine, or, or, or Vargas, or even the city clerk, the city treasurer, do we have any contract with the city?
To answer your question.
Yes, it's no. You don't have no fact.
If there's no fear, then why not enact it?
We can go ahead and vote, we can go ahead and vote on this, because.
You have nothing to hide, if the council has nothing to hide, move forward.
It does not affect Mike, it does not affects me, because the fireworks have nothing to do with the city of Hawthorne.
No one's talking about fireworks.
Is a nonprofit business with the, a, a business company outside the city. We bring revenue to the city. We, we, when we do fireworks, we, we let's say, we collect sales tax. We, we buy children's shoes, we buy children's, uh, uh, school uniform, we buy them meals, we buy them toys for the Christmas. We buy them, we buy even a wheelchair.
Uh, that's the argument.
You and your cloney wants to do, to, to prevent childrens, you know, to be much more hungry and homeless, go ahead and try to pick on, on, on people that are doing a good work for the community, not taking.
That's very cute.
And not taking advantage of the black and brown community like you, your family have now.
All right, guys.
Uh, through the chair.
Just a moment, councilmember Day, uh, Valentine, I can't have any comments, I can't have any interruptions. Every, I've been very fair about letting everybody speak and even respecting your time, councilmember what, respecting yours, councilmember Daya, and yours, uh, Mayor Protem Montero. Okay, so I can't have any interjections while people are speaking or any, any other type of improper interruptions. Councilmember Valentine?
Yeah, I would, uh, I would actually like a legal confidential on this item. And because when I started look, reading the, the text of this, I realized it could possibly affect me because of, 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 um, operating the, um, uh, Hawthorne Business Expo. Since, since I am the leader of the Hawthorne Business Expo and since we raise money, now we do not accept money from the city, but we do use city staff time, because the cities, the, the, uh, city does contribute its staff time to our operation. And I am the leader, and so it would, it would benefit me to have some, to have a legal confidential on this. It, so, um, Mr. City Attorney, could we get a legal confidential on this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Also to have, um, CDBG, CDBG funds, uh, addressed within that legal confidential and where those funds tend to go to.
Okay.
And all nonprofits are associated with it.
Wow. To the chair to be transparent, I want all those CDBG contracts to put on, online. Because, because there is no, the, the CDBG, we have not gave nonprofits money until the, until this year, when I suggest to give the Justice Center money and the, um, the handicap, what's the name of that place?
Michael's Learning Center.
Michael's Learning Center. So those are the only two organizations that we're giving money out of the CDBG. Uh, so, um, actually, it to be transparent, you know, just put those online too, uh, but.
All previous years.
I don't have no problem with, with this, uh, with this discussion. And I'll, I'll add family and relatives, but Russell, go ahead and give us the, the legal confidential. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. All right. Thank you, thank you very much. So I just wanna remind everybody, let's follow the quorum, no interruptions, no interjections, no improper commentary or jest. Please. Uh, okay, so elected officials' reports, recommendations. Uh, we'll start off with, uh, where's our, uh, city treasurer? I don't see, there you are, I see you now. Mr. City Treasurer, go ahead for your report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have really much to say. I wanna thank the community for tuning in, paying attention, make your voices heard, calling in, emailing in. I, I want to express my, uh, support also of SB fourteen-ten. And, um, you know, happy to see that council is, uh, expressing their support. Um, and, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are sharp. Okay, good to see you. Um, city clerk?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, I wanna thank everyone for watching from home. Uh, again, I commend our neighbors for speaking up during public comments. Please continue to have your voices heard. Um, we do state, uh, we send some info via our social media sites, just so people are aware of our council meetings. Uh, to our neighbors watching, please share the phone with your family and friends. Uh, COVID nineteen is real. In Hawthorne, as of yesterday, our city had a total of one thousand five hundred and seventy, seventy-six cases and thirty deaths. Um, in addition, yesterday, we had a total of sixty-three deaths in LA County. Uh, I'm not sharing this info to scare anyone, but, um, those are the facts. Um, as of, as many of you know, I'm a professor and a counselor at Santa Monica College. So I have thirty-minute sessions with my students and it's pretty alarming to see how common it's becoming. Um, that my students either had COVID or family members had COVID, or some family members have passed away. So it's just a really, it's a, it's a real thing, so just be careful out there. Um, if you ever wanna look at, look up Hawthorne stats, uh, we do, do post them every Friday via Nextdoor on Instagram. Um, kinda going back to this, uh, repeated thing about the census, so please, please, uh, complete the census. Uh, as many of you know, I don't know why this decision was made, but, um, basically the deadline has been moved from October thirty-first to September thirtieth, so we're about seven weeks away from the census, uh, be, census deadline. So, um, California's response rate is at sixty-five percent, um, ours in Hawthorne right now is at sixty-one percent. So we can definitely be better than that. Um, and with that said, there's census workers that are now visiting households who have not responded, uh, to those who have not completed the census. So please make sure to respond, uh, so that they don't have to show up to your house. Next, I just wanna make sure that our neighbors are aware of the LA County COVID nineteen rent relief program. Uh, applications are being, uh, uh, accepted from August seventeenth to August thirty-first. Uh, you can learn more about the program through the city's Nextdoor and Instagram accounts, also by calling two-one-one on your phones. Um, over the next few months, the city clerk's office is spearheading the Hawthorne Census and Get Out the Vote campaign. There are about twenty volunteers who are helping us get the word out about the census and to register to vote and also to vote. Um, it's just amazing to see a group of volunteers, uh, most of them are young, uh, individuals or uh, individuals who are represented for underserved community, uh, groups. So it's just nice to have, uh, people together who really care about the census and voting. Um, so we're gonna be doing most of our work through social media, uh, putting up posters at local businesses and strategically passing out flyers uh, throughout the city. And that's all for me. Uh, thanks again for watching and stay safe out there.
Um, yes, thank you. Councilmember Mike Daya?
Well, that was a spirited debate on nonprofits, that was, um, that was pretty interesting. Um, well, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're gonna start a, uh, program to clean our streets. I mean, everybody's been complaining about that for a long time. I wanna, I really congratulate the new, uh, city manager for taking the step to get that thing started. I think there's gonna be a lot of people, uh, in the, in, in, in certain parts of our city that are gonna be very happy to be able to make a phone call instead of having to call a city councilman to take care of a problem. So I hope that it works that, that smoothly. And I hope that we give it the time that it needs and the money that it needs, uh, and, and, uh, and nurture that program along. Because I think one of the, 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 the best programs that we got out there, we got a lot of good programs, but one of them that's really good, cause you never hear any complaints about it, is the graffiti program. And, uh, and if we can have that as a, as a goal, to see if we could somehow get that to function, i- i- is good or very close to how the graffiti program works. Um, or even animal control, uh, for that matter. You know how those programs where you, you, you call them directly and they come over and, and, um, just so people, you know, we get a, a, a good group, a good consensus to make that, that work. Um, these, uh, resolutions and these, um, these, uh, um, laws that are being passed in an election year, uh, a lot of times, you know, they're not all that they're cracked out to be and, and I'm glad that, uh, uh, you know, we have to take care of our, uh, our tenants, because, you know, i- if you don't, if you don't, nobody wants an eviction, you know, it's just bad all the way around. It doesn't, it doesn't really work. But, you know, and, and we, people, uh, uh, us that have been around a long time and have seen a lot of different markets, I've seen a lot of ups and downs. I, I remember when the interest rates were eighteen percent, I was in business. And so, uh, but I also know what it's like when a homeowner starts losing their homes. And that's kind of a, uh, you know, it's, once it starts, man, it's a, it's a, it's a hassle. And, uh, so I'd like to see a little bit of, take it in a consideration that it isn't just the landlord's, uh, obligation to underwrite the tenant, that there has to be a more equitable solution where the tenant and the landlord is also considered. And, and Hawthorne, the majority, the majority of the rental properties are small, one to two, uh, two to four units. And, um, you know, taking into consideration that if you lose rents on one of those or two of those, you're losing thirty to fifty percent of the income that that property produces. So, you know, um, have that and factor that into your equation, that that's a, uh, somebody else that needs to be protected and, and, uh, he's a constituent also. Um, so, but, uh, and in terms of, um, that's it, you know, that's it. I, I, uh, I wanna thank, uh, again, the city council for, um, making that program, uh, created, giving, giving a little life to that program, uh, about keeping the, the city clean. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, councilmember Olivia Valentine?
So at the South Bay Council of Governments, we do a lot of brainstorming about what could be and what our cities might look like. And yesterday at the steering committee, we were discussing how COVID nineteen may impact our cities in the future by forcing us to reimagine streets and parking. So all of the cities are providing some sort of relief to the restaurants or other retail by allowing them, allowing them to operate on some sidewalks and parking lots as we are. What if this is the harbinger of things to come and the cities and the restaurants like the vibrancy that this creates? So we talked about, well, will, will they allow, allow this to continue past COVID nineteen? And even want to expand it and turn some of these streets into commercial areas? And if they do, how will this impact parking and traffic? And how will streets be configured? So if you think about it, this might boost the demand for smaller and fewer vehicles on these streets. So a lot of things might change as a result of this. Um, so this is one of the things we talked about, how COVID nineteen might impact us in the future. The other thing we talked about was people are using their homes more and more now for office space. When we did the broadband study, we, we have, we had only one connection. Um, we committed to only one connection to the South Bay fiber network, uh, and that was City Hall. For example, we never considered providing broadband to, broadband to the residents. However, this may be a consideration for the future, because many of our residents will be doing video conferencing and other work from their home, which requires the internet, which they were not doing. I mean, they were doing it before, but not, not to the extent they're doing it now. So what if we created a broadband connection at a neighborhood center, which would be a resource for the use of, say, Wi-Fi, three-D printing, video conferencing? What if we had a broad, what if we had a neighborhood center where the residents could come and use these? So we would need another broadband connection in order to, in order to provide this service. Just something to think about how COVID nineteen has changed our way of life and, and, and thinking of how we might uh, make lemonade out of lemons and, uh, use, use it for, uh, for rethinking how our community might look. Um, we have a police practices dialogue, um, set up, the South Bay Cog. We're going to have our second police practices dialogue on August twentieth on Zoom. You will all get, be getting um, an invitation. Mayor Jim Butts and Joe and of Inglewood and Joe Buscaino, L.A. City Council member, will be the two co-hosts. The idea is to find ways of increasing communication and trust between the cities and their police departments. And I'm very grateful to Chief Ishi and the Hawthorne Police Department for a huge contribution to the program in the questions um, that, that I submitted on their behalf. And uh, Mayor Butts and Councilmember Buscaino were very pleased with the questions and they will be using many of them. And again, you will be sent a link so that you can log in. So we're, we're hoping for another very uh, robust dialogue on August twentieth. Um, did we make, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. Did we make any comment about the letter that was sent from the concerned residents of Hawthorne um, about the, the intersection at one hundred and twenty-sixth and Cedar being very dangerous? Did we make any commitment on that? At the time, this, this, this was brought up at the beginning of the uh, council meeting?
No, there weren't any statements about it.
There were no statements?
No, and I'm also just, I'm sorry to follow up. I'm going to send you guys a video that was attached with the letter, with the public statement as well.
Okay, so I would like to give a directive to the city manager and ask him to please um, have our people take a look at that intersection and study it and see if, uh, and see what the issue is there and whether um, we might be able to um, to do anything which can uh, can, can um, ameliorate the danger at that, at, at the perceived danger at that uh, at that intersection.
Welcome to.
Thank you. Thank you all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you. Um, just want to thank the residents for coming out. Um, in regards to SB fourteen-ten, um, for the residents that were on the last town hall and saw Senator Bradford discuss the, the bill, um, he is going to come back on to even go further on where it's at and additional details regarding it um, at the end of the month. Um, so if you have any questions, whether you're a renter or a landlord, it's a very crucial bill, um, please join that virtual office hours. Um, the other thing was um, there are two other items. Um, uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, there are two things are, are, one is apparently there's a very large coyote issue uh, in certain parts of Hawthorne. Um, is there, is there a way we can start looking into that? And I'll provide you the, the residential addresses and their emails to find a way how, how we can address it or what organization, I know it's not through our animal control, it has to be partnered up with a different wildlife organization. Um, so if you can set something to address that issue, I, I had no idea it was getting that, that extreme where we're having a coyote infestation in um, certain parts of Hawthorne, especially on the Bodger Park Ramona side. Uh, if that's something you could look into.
Oh, do.
Um, the other was, was um, so it's safe, we were getting a, an abundance of emails uh, regarding trash pickup and things of that nature. Would we, would we address that to your office or code enforcement or is it both?
So if, if there's problems with the trash pickup, the Republic is not picking it up correctly, um, Public Works would be the lead on.
Trash on the streets and all that kind of, Public Works?
So, so, so Public Works would, would, you know, they, they oversee the, the trash contract as it relates to um, you know, debris and whatnot on, on the city streets and sidewalks. Um, they would be, need to be aware too. I mean, that's, some, some of this relates to the more bulky item uh, pickup that we're trying to establish this pilot program on. So I mean, I think at this point, Public Works would be the point of contact and certainly uh, the director and, and I will work on solutions.
That's great. Uh, I, 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 the, the program everyone's talking about, I have that, that set up on my um, website and it's live. So I just wanted to make sure where to, we, I've had an infusion of, of these emails. So now redirecting them to the proper department. Um, but I see clarified, so it'll be Public Works Department. Um, great, now I know.
Yeah, there's, there's a way to, to, to summarize those so we can actually deal with them as a, as a system as opposed to one-offs. I think that'd be helpful as well.
Yeah, one, like one PDF file with all of them?
Yeah, I think that'd be easier. Yeah.
Okay.
And then we can, and then Public Works will work with code enforcement if it's a private property type issue or anything else that has to do with code enforcement, um, we'll figure out who's going to be the handle on it.
I appreciate that so much.
Okay.
And that's all.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Potteau Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh, good meeting, democracy in action. Um, actually, I just talked about a little bit of the, of the trash issue. I did uh, contact Republic Waste Management, our contact person, you know, Dawn Harris. And uh, I discussed with her about, you know, the, the trash issue because a lot of uh, residents was talking about that they've been calling and, and, and uh, Republic has not been responsive. So I did, I did talk to her and of course, you know, uh, this covid nineteen uh, have changed a lot of office hours and, and people working from home. Uh, and they have, they have some, some adjustment to make. And the other thing that she told me that they have seen a thirty percent increase in trash uh, in all the cities, not just Hawthorne. So, so they're having a big issue because, you know, um, uh, people are staying at home and they're doing a lot of, I think, cleanups, right? Closet, garage cleanup, everything. So they're a lot, they're throwing a lot of stuff out. So they have seen a thirty percent increase on trash uh, since the covid nineteen uh, from March to now. So, so we on top of the issue. Um, I want to congratulate the, the police department for the, the Daily Breeze article. Thank you, Eric, for, for that uh, that article to us, to see our police office on the bikes, you know, going through the community to, to do outreach. So that's a, it's a good sign to, you know, to build uh, community engagement with the, wow, police department. So that was a great, a great P off for our police department. So congratulate uh, Chief Ishi and all the officers uh, for doing a, a good job in our community. Again, also I want to congratulate on our city manager, Eric, because this uh, uh, plan to enhance city service is, is a good plan and we need it uh, because, you know, we out there, a lot of people sending us email about, about permits, about, and even yard sales permits. So, so I'm looking forward for us to, to build our system, especially online system uh, to do the website uh, more friendly and people can get access to our service. So I'm happy to see you have a plan. I appreciate that very much. Um, the other thing that um, I think uh, Dr. Jimenez mentioned uh, that I did receive uh, an email about the uh, the county rental uh, eligibility, the rental assistance program that's going to start on, on Monday the seventeen until August thirty-first. Like he said, people have to go to the two-one-one uh, to apply. And, and I, and I saw the uh, uh, Instagram that was posted by the city. So thank you for, for doing, for doing that. Um, again, uh, all of us are familiar about, and that is what is no brainer for us to support any legislative coming from Sacramento to deal with the landlords and the tenants and the eviction. Uh, because that is where, you know, I spent about two hours on a, with that seminar to come up with creative ideas how we would prevent eviction and also to prevent homeless. Because that's what I'm saying, because we know uh, eviction, the only people can stop eviction is the court and the state and the legislation. They have to come up from the, from us, from Sacramento, and I hope they will look into that. And especially to come up with programs that they're going to help the landlords that so that the families and the individual can stay in their homes and not be on the streets. So we have to continue to advocate to our legislator in Sacramento, in Washington to bring federal dollar to deal with this issue because I think it is a crisis. It's like a, a time bomb ready to explode. So we need to, we need to deal with this issue. Um, and um, and again, you know, unfortunately, like uh, Mike said about, you know, during the campaign, on election, all these legislations start to come up and then some of them just go away after the November election. Uh, but we are here to do a service for the people and we're not here to hide nothing. So transparency has been, has been on the forefront of, of, of Hawthorne since I'm got elected. Uh, because, you know, I ran into call it in uh, integrity. So there is nothing that we are hiding. So uh, we are transparent. People can, can call the city clerk and, and obtain all, all the information they needed. We will provide it. So we're not hiding anything. So uh, we have been transparent and I hope we'll continue to do so. Uh, and we have done outstanding job for these, for these, for these past uh, uh, you know, two years that, that I've been here that we have done uh, people's business, not funny business. Uh, uh, and, and so we've been helping, even like I said, the homeless. Uh, when I began in two thousand and eighteen, I was the first one to join the homeless task force because I know there was an issue of, of homeless. So, so we need to make sure that our, our citizen is well cared for and the health and well-being and their safety is our priority. Number one priority, and that's what we'll continue to advocate for the city. So thank you all of you for the, for the outstanding meeting and have a good night.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Uh, thank you all for participating in today's lively debate. Uh, and uh, I think uh, we just need to move forward. I think we're doing great things. Uh, we just need to do our part to make sure that this uh, covid nineteen is just uh, taken care of and defeated once and for all. So we can up, at, attempt to achieve normalcy as soon as possible. Because the economic impact is very uh, great. The impact on human lives is, you know, we can't afford to lose one life. So we just need to be conscious, make sure that let your neighbor, if you see somebody not wearing their mask when they're supposed to, make sure you bring it to their attention. Um, it's difficult. It's not an easy thing to do, but we need to do it. So we just need to make sure that every, we hold everybody accountable. Uh, there's not a lot of things happening out in the community that we can report on. Um, but I think, Mr. City Manager, I, I do want to just highlight um, your ability to be able to have a vision for the future and what the city of Hawthorne needs. Uh, I think we're very, very happy with what we're seeing as a city council. I mean, if anybody disagrees with me, you know, say your piece right now. I mean, interrupt me, but you know, uh, I, I, I think that we're, we're seeing great progress. Um, we, like we said, Arnie's shoes are very large shoes to fill. Uh, but you've already stepped your feet into those shoes. Uh, I guess that's the closest analogy I could say, and you're already working yourself around those shoes and, you know, they're, they're starting to fit. So I, I appreciate your efforts today. It was very grand. And so I also want to highlight, just so for the future, um, make sure, I mean, I said today, everybody just, I checked to make sure that everybody had read all those items. So later on, they can't say that, oh, we didn't know we were going to spend it on that and all this stuff. So too, that's why I stopped for a moment and asked that and pulsed everybody here on the city council to make sure that everybody was well versed with what was on that suggestion list by our city manager. Um, I guess that's it. There's not much more uh, to talk about. Oh, and then SB of the, the Senate bill that we discussed today that we want to support as a group. So yes, uh, kudos to State Senator Lena Rodriguez and all the supporting co-authors. Uh, Senator Bradford uh, was one of them. So we just want to make sure that it's a balanced uh, type of uh, assistance that we're giving out to our community members. Uh, we want to make sure we help the renters, but we also want to make sure that those of your neighbors who actually own some of those duplexes or might live in the front house or owns like a three or four units. Uh, these are just like, these are, this is what they're using for retirement. This is what they're using as their investment for retirement. So uh, we just need to make sure that we're sensitive to that. And we ask our Sacramento leadership to just uh, please come up with something that will help them as well. We want to make sure it's a balance. We just can't help over here and this goes here. We have to help all our community members rise together. Okay? So thank you all. All right, so let's take a look. I think we have a closed session. Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Would it be okay to stop our regular meeting and just uh, jump into the special meetings for the benefit of those people watching out there?
Uh, I prefer that you uh, do both closed sessions, adjourn the regular meeting, and then we go into the special meeting.
So you don't like my idea of doing this for the benefit of the residents?
Uh, no, because the special, the special meeting is only a closed session as well. Okay?
I know. I phrase my, I phrase my question on purpose. I, you know, it's fine. No, I respect what your recommendation is and uh,
Hey, to the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to also mention that, that acknowledge that we received the Jan Vogel, the South Bay Whip Workforce Investment Board the quarterly report. So it was uh, and thank Jan and the South Bay Whip, you know, for continuing to provide jobs to residents because uh, I saw that the five residents of Hawthorne get jobs uh, this quarter. So that is, so he'll continue to provide service through the covid nineteen, employing our citizens. So thank you for the report to Jan Vogel.
And so just looking a little bit at the special meeting, uh, so Mr. City Attorney, you're right. There wouldn't have been any benefit of jumping into the special meeting since there are two special closed sessions that uh, the public won't be able to benefit really by observing it. Um, right now, there's just nothing to watch because we're going to be in the back. Okay, is there any, is there anything further? Or anybody want to speak on the closed session before we go back? Do you have any communications, Mr. City Clerk?
No, we do not.
I'm going to give everybody five minutes for a restroom break so that we can start the special, the closed session in five minutes. So everybody gets a restroom break. So we are now in recess.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people, two arm length. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
...
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
We have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm plank. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash. Rub your hands and fingers and the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach out, you're almost done. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and...
We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone.
Russell is back in session. Mr. City Attorney? Can you tell us what the direction is, please?
Oh, Russell, you're on mute. You're on mute, Russell.
Oh.
You're on mute. Russell, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Alright.
Okay, on item number 36, the labor negotiator has been instructed. On item number 37, the city attorney has been instructed.
Okay.
That's it.
So... If there's nothing further from our city councilman, before I close out this meeting, I want to let you guys know that in about 90 seconds, we're going to open up with a special meeting for another item. So, I'm going to end this meeting and adjourn this meeting, and then I'm going to call to order another one in 90 seconds. So just stay tuned out. Anybody who's watching out there on cable or on the internet. This meeting is now adjourned.